The meeting to order at six oh two. Everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please. And for those of you that can't hear, we apologize. Microphones are not functioning correctly tonight so far. Any conflict of interest declarations? Changes or deletions to the agenda? Seeing none. Moving on to public comment. Any person wishing to speak to the city council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any item on the council agenda at the time the item comes up for consideration. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Three minutes are typically allotted to each speaker. Anyone in our audience? Seeing none? Anyone virtual? Seeing none, moving on. Any communications?
No communications, mayor.
Thank you. Student liaison report.
Good evening, everyone. And today for my report, I have that we had our first ever snow day on February twenty-fourth. Mr. Eagle, which was originally scheduled for March second, is scheduled for tomorrow, March ninth at seven P. M. Sports banquet is scheduled for today for winter sports. Art students have a field trip for Saturday, March eleventh to San Francisco. Physics students have a field trip to San Francisco tomorrow. Track meet fundraiser is on Saturday at C H S at one o'clock, and we have spring break from March twentieth to March twenty-fifth, and that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Next is D two, proclamation of the American Red Cross Month. Is there anyone who would like to? Sorry, I thought you were going down. Is there anyone that would like to read this? Seeing none, I would love to. Proclamation of the city council of the city of Cloverdale proclaiming March twenty-twenty-three American Red Cross Month. Whereas in times of crisis, people in the city of Cloverdale come together to care for one another. This humanitarian spirit is a part of the foundation of our community and is exemplified by American Red Cross volunteers and donors. Whereas in eighteen eighty-one, Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross, turning her steadfast dedication for helping others into a bold mission of preventing and alleviating people's suffering. Whereas today, more than a hundred forty years later, we honor the kindness and generosity of Red Cross volunteers here in Cloverdale who continue to carry out Clara's life-saving legacy. They join the millions of people across the United States who volunteer, give blood, donate financially, or learn vital life-preserving skills through the Red Cross. Whereas in Cloverdale, the contributions of local Red Cross volunteers give hope to the most vulnerable in their darkest hours, whether it's providing emergency shelter, food, and comfort for families devastated by local disasters like home fires, donating essential blood for accident and burn victims, heart surgery and organ transplant patients, and those receiving treatment for leukemia, cancer, or sickle cell disease. Supporting service members and veterans, along with their families and caregivers, through the unique challenges of military life, helping to save the lives of others with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or delivering international humanitarian aid. And whereas their support, volunteerism, and generous donations are critical to our community's resilience, we hereby recognize this month of March in honor of all those who fulfill Clara Barton's noble words, "You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it," and ask everyone to join in this commitment. And whereas the work performed by the American Red Cross to prevent and alleviate human suffering is vital to strengthening our community's resilience, during American Red Cross Month in March, we celebrate the humanitarian spirit of Cloverdale and reaffirm our commitment to help ensure no one faces a crisis alone. Whereas caring for one another is at the heart of our community and exemplified by the people of Cloverdale, whose simple acts of kindness through the Red Cross provide help and hope in people's most difficult moments, thereby continuing the life-saving legacy of Clara Barton, who founded the organization more than a hundred forty years ago to prevent and alleviate human suffering. And whereas the city council of the city of Cloverdale dedicates this month of March to all those who continue to advance the noble legacy of American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, who lived by her words, "You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it." Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Cloverdale does hereby proclaim March twenty-twenty-three as Red Cross Month and encourages all citizens of Cloverdale to reach out and support its humanitarian mission dated March eighth, twenty-twenty-three, so ordered myself, the mayor, Todd Lands. So tonight, we have a gentleman from American Red Cross by the name of Andy, and I asked for a little bit of a bio from you, so thank you for sending that. I want to talk a little bit about Andy. Andy's a retired teacher from Cotati-Ronard Park. He's also retired CTA staffer and negotiated on behalf of Cloverdale's teachers for twelve years. He started volunteering with Red Cross after the Tubbs fire. He continues as a Red Cross volunteer participating in the smoke alarm installation program, the elementary school student preparedness program, logistics, and mass care activities. He's also a Napa and Sonoma representative on our regional government relations committee, which has led him to asking local councils to pass the Red Cross Month proclamation. So that is enough, and I appreciate that. So Andy, thank you.
I actually read the whole thing.
I read it a couple of times before, and I'm like, there's nothing I would change. I'm just gonna read it.
Mike, Mike asked me, Mike told me that you asked for something to introduce me with, and so I sent that and said, he's welcome to use any part or all of it as he sees fit. Nice to see you all. I was here last year to also collect the proclamation for twenty-twenty-two. We appreciate you doing again this year. You know, we, we try our best. We did not get called up for the snow day. I don't know why. I'd have liked to have come up and built some snowmen along with the other people that I saw in the press, Democrat, making them. Did a fine job. Red Cross is happy to serve the people of Sonoma County, including Cloverdale. A couple of things that we are most proud of and that I'm very involved with. We do have blood collection in the Red Cross office in Arrow Drive down in Santa Rosa. That is a long way for people from Cloverdale to drive to give blood. We can make arrangements to hold a blood drive in Cloverdale if the city would like to do that. We need a space in which to do it, roughly the size of this room, where we can set up tables and folks can lay down and have their blood taken, and it does save lives. Other program I'm involved with is smoke alarm installations. There are unbelievable large numbers of people that still do not have smoke alarms in their homes to let them know when a fire is starting. Our DAT program disaster assistance team does come out when there are home fires and assists when police and fire call them to try and give those victims some money for a place to stay, some food, and get them through the first few days of that. So if you have a need for smoke alarm installation program, you know, call the Red Cross and let us know. You would like to do a blood drive sometime in Cloverdale, let me know. It does take a while to set that up because we gotta find a hole in the team's schedule when they can come out of the office and come up here. But those are great services, and we're happy to work with the city of Cloverdale along with other municipalities in Sonoma County to make those things available. So again, thank you for the proclamation. Thank you for reading it. I'm sorry the audience wasn't larger to hear about Red Cross Month, but I know that they'll read the minutes carefully when you guys post them. So thank you very much to the council members and to the staff that support them, and to Mike, who made this happen. Thanks, Mike.
Andy, I know that we're gonna make sure it was worth your time. Councilmember Wheeler just mentioned that the vets hall would probably be willing to do a blood drive there. The veterans hall here in town?
Yeah, yeah, I know it well.
They'd be very excited to do a blood drive. So if you want to start setting one up, councilmember Wheeler would like to be in contact with you.
Okay, fantastic. Would you be the person, Brian, for the Red Cross blood drive folks to talk with? Or would it be somebody over at? Who should they contact first?
Absolutely.
Contact you, okay. All right. It'll take you guys a while to find a date that's available. Also, it'll take the Red Cross folks time for their blood drive people to find a place in their schedule that they could come up here. But, you know, like I said, I know that not very many people from Cloverdale go all the way down to the Santa Rosa offices to give blood. And if we can come do it here, I think it'd be a great success trying to set that up in many communities across the county. All right, Brian, thanks much.
Anyone else?
Thank you, everybody. Much appreciated.
Andy, would you be?
You were probably in kindergarten when I was up here working with the teachers.
Would you be up for a picture? Would you be up for a photo?
Oh, sure.
Anyone?
Back rock would you like? I'll follow you guys.
Huge audience.
Yeah, where do you want to take the picture?
Right here with the students and everyone in the background. All right. Moving on, E consent calendar. All items under the consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the city council unless any council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. Are there any items under E that anyone would like to poll?
Short comment. I just wanted to thank Vanessa Apodaca for finding and helping Cloverdale apply for those two water grants that will support. Fingers crossed, hopefully I'm not cursing this right now. They'll support the upgrade of crucial water infrastructure for several decades to come. They're really key projects, and just having that partnership with our contract city engineer and the accompanying weight of West Coast behind that is just turning out to be a great source of grant, potential grant funding for much-needed water infrastructure. So I just want to thank senior staff for making that happen and pass on our thanks to Vanessa and West Coast.
You can completely agree. Really comments? Does anyone have a motion?
I'll have you to move the consent calendar tonight.
I second it.
Michael, just whenever you are ready.
Councilmember Wheeler?
Aye.
Councilmember Morganstern?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Mayor Lands?
Aye.
If you can please repeat the secondary motion for the, for the record.
First was councilmember Bagby, second was councilmember Wheeler.
Thank you.
And for the record, Vice Mayor Walter is out.
Thank you.
So vote passes four zero. And moving on to new business. G one, resolution opposing initiative number twenty-one dash zero zero four two A one, the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act. David?
Good, good evening, mayor, members of council. Happy to present this item tonight. For the listening public, the, the, the agenda item tonight is in regards to an initiative referred to as Initiative twenty-one dash zero zero four two A one. This is an initiative that qualified for the November twenty-twenty-four ballot based on signatures that was presented by the California Business Roundtable. It's a group of private enterprise organizations. The measure is referred to as the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act, and again, the previously referenced number. Just by way of background, a similar initiative was brought forward in twenty-eighteen. At that time, council reviewed the initiative, and it's depicted up here on the screen. Council took action to adopt a resolution opposing the, the measure at that time. In, in many cases, the, the, the measure that's on the twenty-twenty-four ballot is very similar, though there are some, there are some, you know, key amendments. The reason I wanted to point that out is because I think many of the reasons why the council opposed it in twenty-eighteen will support reasons why you may want to oppose the initiative by taking action tonight. The action that staff's requesting or recommending is adoption of a resolution that would take a position of opposition to the initiative and likewise authorize the mayor to sign a letter opposing the initiative that would get filed on, 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 on our behalf with the League of California Cities. Do want to note that the League of California Cities, or CAL Cities, was, was quite aware of this initiative and its impact on cities, and in fact engaged with the, the proponents of the initiative to try to make friendly amendments that would address some of the main impacts to cities. And, and for the most part, those, those amendments were not what supported. The, the initiative from our analysis, you know, we call it the fiscal analysis, has the potential to impact over twenty million dollars in government fees and revenues that are, were adopted by voters of the state in, in respective cities and counties, primarily starting in early January of twenty-twenty-two. Also calls into question or, or makes the, the process under which council sets fees, but also negotiates franchise fees or sets fines and penalties, for example, for code enforcement, very much, very much more restrictive than is currently provided for in law. And, and one thing I do want to emphasize, because I know our council is very careful in the processes it utilizes to set fees, pretty much anytime we bring forward a fee, there's a requirement for a, a public hearing, and there is also an opportunity for the, our community to, to weigh in and provide input on that fee-setting process. For the most part, all of our fees are based on cost recovery. But the initiative that is, or being recommended to be opposed, you know, sets a, a very difficult bar to meet in terms of validating the, our, our fee-setting process. Some of the impacts, and like, this is a great, if you want to go to that summary outline that I want to really speak to that are particularly impactful to the city of Cloverdale, one of which is that this, this measure would prohibit any local advisory measures. And, and where that comes into play is if, you know, council wanted to seek the community input on where they stand relative to a potential tax measure. This, this measure, in essence, appears to take that authority away from council, and we, we see that as, you know, really limiting your authority, and, you know, certainly is a reason why council may want to oppose, oppose such a measure. Maybe more dear to home is that the, the proposed measure would require any properties that are annexed to the city to subsequently approve any existing taxes in effect at that time. We are, we're, we most recently had a number of annexations, and the question would be, does that apply retroactively to those recently annexed properties? I'm thinking of two, two large annexations that occurred in the southwest planning area, the Bumgarner subdivision, as well as the Baydu Kali project. But going forward, we're also looking at proposed annexation of the six acres area as well as South Cloverdale Water Company. And if this measure was to pass as currently written, suggests that the current taxes approved by our voters would not apply to them until they also are required to vote on those tax measures. And so, you know, it could really potentially create an unequal playing field by, you know, setting in place a higher bar for properties that are, that are annexed, requiring, requiring a vote. In addition, the, the, the legislation also calls into question our ability to set franchise fees. We've historically collected franchise free fees from some of the larger utility that provide services within our community. For, for example, PG&E pays franchise fees to the city, largely related to the use of our right-of-way and public impacts, or impacts thereto from the use of that right-of-way, but, but, but also our solid waste contract calls for the payment of franchise fees. Often those are subject to negotiated processes that relate to the services that are being provided and the impacts to the community, and this initiative puts in place what could very well be a very restrictive process relative to, to any changes in franchise fees. I think, you know, from, from, from my vantage point, that really restricts your authority as, as a city council, and, and, and because of that, I think, in, in particular, certainly recommend that council to take a position of opposition, but also because of all the other ancillary impacts, particularly to our other cities and to a number of our existing tax measures that apply within the county. Our voters have taken action to locally approve an ad valorem tax that helps to pay, you know, our significant pension obligations, and it's, I, I think it's one of the key reasons we're able to, to, to be able to continue to fund our, our public safety functions. Likewise, with our utility user tax, it's critical to funding a number of our, our parks functions in particular, but there's also a host of other local taxes. We, we recently approved a library tax that helps prepare, pay for additional library services. We have a, a measure M that pays for parks as well as streets. So the, you know, many of the provisions within this initiative are things that were already built into those approved taxes at the time when they were put before the voters. Again, they make it, make it much more restrictive in doing so, you know, which again limits, in, in our opinion, limits, limits your ability and your, your discretion on how a tax measure may come forward. And ultimately, anytime these come forward, it's, it's the voters that have the final say. If this, this measure seems to make it more difficult in how, how those measures are brought forward and what language they ultimately contain. With that said, there, there is a resolution in your packet which would, again, put the city council on record as opposing the initiative and also, again, authorize the mayor to sign a letter of opposition that would go, go on the record. I, I don't think this is much different than the action that's taken past, taken in the past in twenty-eighteen. And again, our, our recommendation is that council take action to adopt the resolution to oppose, oppose the measure as, the initiative as it's currently. So mayor, that concludes staff's agenda report. Happy to entertain any questions, and I know our city attorney has also got the legislation up if, if you have any specific questions about the bill in particular.
Thank you, David. Very clear and good report. Start with up here. I know Melanie had a lot of information on this, so I would love to hear from her.
I, I'm not gonna rehash what we, you know, talked about at Finance Admin and, and Police, but I will say that I think David is a really exemplary staff person, and he did what they all need to do, and that is he was fair and understated, and I think he really understated a lot of this. And one of the, one of the points in particular is that higher bar for annexation. It just, it, it makes our, our jobs ungovernable, and it's such a clear loophole for the large real estate developers that this bill cynically benefits. It also is a cynical benefit for, it's the, it's the soda companies who are afraid of large cities implementing taxes on, on, on beverages. That's what this is about. It's a tax loophole for them, and it's cynical and it's deceptive, and, you know, it, it would be hypocritical for us to not come out in strong opposition to this because we are so dependent from everything, from our roads to our parks to our libraries on local tax initiatives. And one of the things that I kind of discussed briefly with David about today, I said, you know, I've served on some of these sales, the, the county or the regional sales tax renewals, and they all have sunsets in them. They're built in. It's because it's just, it's just good policy. Some, it's interestingly, interestingly enough, some of our Cloverdale local Some, interestingly enough, some of our Cloverdale local taxes don't have sunset dates, and the voters chose to do that for a purpose so that they would, so that we would actually have a dependable source of revenue so that we could go out for matching grants. And the voters went into the voting booth or at home with their ballots, and they ticked that box, and they said, this is a really good idea because I want to have these essential services in my town. So I just wanted to, just one thing to kind of underline is that the CAL Cities Executive Board in our meeting last week, they're taking this very seriously, and I think it's really important that even, you know, small cities like us come out and say, we are, we're delivering these services with this revenue, and our voters, this wasn't, you know, maybe the council members and the supervisors sat on the renewal committees, but the voters went to the voting booth and they voted for it. So just considering how dependent our small city is on these local tax measures, I think that we should come out in strong opposition and stand with other cities and do everything that we can locally to work with our local Sonoma County cities in the county to make sure that this measure is defeated. It's just so important to the services that we provide to our kids and our residents every single day.
Thank you, Councilmember Bagby.
I have another? No. Morganstern?
I just wanted to say what bothered me the most about it was it's, when I was reading about it, it said that corporations would be paying less taxes, and I don't think that would be good for our community.
Open it up to the public, seeing no one in the audience and no one on virtual.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have one person online, but they are not raising their hand at this time.
Second. And we'll bring it back to the dais. Any further comments or anyone want to make a motion?
I amend the resolution by title only. A resolution to the City Council, the city of Cloverdale, opposing Initiative 21-0042A1 and authorizing the mayor to sign a letter of opposition to initiative, I have to read it again, to Initiative 21-00421A1 on behalf of the City Council.
Second?
Second, I'll second that.
Perfect. We have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Wheeler?
Aye.
Councilmember Morganstern?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter is absent.
Passes four zero. Okay, Subcommittee reports. First one is the Finance, Admin, and Police. This CBRT opposition letter was the main topic. One of the other topics that took a few minutes was a cannabis report that's been one of our standing items with a good chart of showing the revenue from that, and so it'll be hopefully a future agenda item for us here.
Stay tuned.
Stay tuned. Planning Sustainability.
Our next meeting is April 18th.
And I apologize, I didn't say the next finance meeting is going to be April 3rd. Public Works and Facilities?
We had our meeting on the 8th, and, oh no, not the 8th, today is the 8th. When was that meeting on then? I'm sorry.
February 28th.
February 28th. Yeah. And there was about 15 standing items we went over. They, I'm not going to go over all of them, they're on the previous agenda, and it was just a lot of updates. David did a great job running through those, and some of the future agenda items we came up, or hopefully as we came up with the, maybe the painting of the red curbs of all the curbs around town, not doing it all in one big shot, and even, I was going to discuss with Derek too, and that is maybe doing some volunteer type, getting neighborhoods together and doing it in a phase, a phase project on that, and getting with neighborhoods, city maybe supply paint and get that together. I'm also working on that. And some other future agenda items was working on the plaza benches, coming up with benches. I know the vice mayor's been working on that, and also doing the, looking at the garbage councils will be coming up on future, maybe a phase thing on future agenda items for that for the council to look at.
Question, Brian, did I maybe hear a possibility of a revival of Community Unity Day, and is your Subcommittee kind of redoing any projects that might be appropriate?
We're not to that point yet, but we're working on it. So we're kind of, kind of broaching that now and coming up and saying, okay, if I can get people together on maybe doing these curbs in a neighborhood and see how people react to that, and then just roll with it from there. So, yeah.
Just an idea. The school district came to me, and I passed it on to David and Hector, looking for projects for their community day.
Perfect.
Might be something to think about.
Yes, thank you.
Joint City and School District. Their next meeting is scheduled for April 17th, 2023. Sure if that's.
I'm excited going.
It might still be just me, right?
Oh, it's me and you.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. And the Homelessness Community Advisory Group?
Next meeting is on June 12th.
Perfect.
And our last meeting, we had a good report from Reach for Home, that's doing a lot to help the homeless in our community.
Thank you. Informational reports? Legislative reports?
Mayor, members of council, there is a letter of support for the SMART Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant, Sustainable Communities Grant included in your packet. This, this letter is consistent with our legislative priorities, and it was signed by the mayor and submitted to SMART.
Thank you. All right, City Manager Report?
Mayor, to be brief, I just want to report that we had a conference this morning with the Sonoma County Department of Emergency Management. Their forecast is to, for Sonoma County and really all of California to receive a very significant atmospheric river event, really starting tomorrow, late tomorrow evening into Friday. I think we are on deck to potentially get up to four inches of rain in the, in the upper watershed. We may get, you know, even, even more, potentially up to six. Right now, the, the Upper Russian is not forecast to flood in the vicinity of Cloverdale, but the Hopland area, the Russian River has exceeded flood stage on early Friday, and likewise, the Lower Russian is expected to exceed flood stage, or at least advisory stage on early Saturday. Part of that will be based on, you know, what actual amount of precipitation we receive, but we, I think we've done a good, good job preparing for the storm event, but it's just a good opportunity to remind our residents to prepare their gutters, and that we do have sand stations set up, sandbag filling stations both at Second Street City Park as well as the parking area at Ferber Park. So those are ready and available for any residents that want to, you know, prepare their property for potential excess precipitation.
Chief, could I ask you to talk a little bit about emergency services during floods and atmospheric rivers?
The same, the same circumstances that we had during the last atmospheric river event. Public Works has done a lot to prepare in advance, which really helps make the emergency response much easier on the city. So two things are going to happen. I'll be reaching out via NICSIL to our resilient Cloverdale group, getting them prepared in the event. If others in the county get evacuated and they should happen to use our shelter, our Citrus Fair Shelter, Tom will be notified. Tom is always ready to go, so we'll have those in place and ready to go. And then tomorrow, I'll be putting out NICSIL as well, alerting the community about all the issues and concerns that we have about flooding, downline, branches, things like that. So those are what, those are the steps we're going to take, very similar to what we had before, but I think we're prepared.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate it. Councilmember Bagby?
You have to get that back to me now. Is that kind of, the NICSIL alert, I just think it's just working so well, and of course we just need to have everybody sign up and do plenty of commercials on that. But, you know, just kind of after the last storms, one of the lessons learned was, oh, hey, what do I do about down trees or down limbs in my backyard that I share with my neighbor, and it's a, it's Cloverdale Creek, for instance? So do we have a, like, frequently asked questions or a storm cleanup, like, best practices or anything like that on the website, or maybe made available? I think, you know the answer.
We're currently updating the website right now. We're adding quite a few things, but we do have a spot where you can go and do a service request, obviously emailing us directly or calling us directly the best, and the Parks Department and our city arborists will can help out with all that.
Yeah, I was happy to make that connection, but I just, if we could maybe get that information out, because, and honestly, I had to then ask staff, it's like, oh, how do you want to get information like that?
Yeah, we can do an update on the news reel on the website.
I mean, I'm sure after this, we'll have another seven year drought, and again, I'm cursing us, but it's just like, it just, it'd be helpful to kind of have, you know, best practices, like, yeah, make sure you get your gutters cleaned, make sure you, you know, sandbags are available here, you know, if you've got a downed tree and you have questions, here's how to contact the city, that sort of thing. Just make that, push that out, make it kind of, you know, handy for people, because I think, you know, hopefully we'll be in good shape after this next storm, but I think it's going to be a, it's going to be a whopper, so. If we just have that handy for people, and then we can push the link out on NICSIL, like, if you have any questions about downed trees, storm damage, anything like that, you know, click on this link, and they can just take them straight to the city website. It just might be helpful for a lot of folks.
Thank you. City Attorney Report?
Just quickly, we're also following, the legislation's starting to come out, different bills are starting to pop up, especially the Brown Act. There's one right now that we're following. It doesn't seem to be doing much, it doesn't seem to be doing a lot or changing a lot, but it's early, so we're hoping that there are going to be some amendments related to kind of virtual meetings and the flexibility for council. We're also, and I was kind of, you know, I held back on the roundtable on the Taxpayers Protection and Government Accountability Act, but what I will tell you is, it's written horribly as well, where the definitions or defined terms, it's, I foresee if something like that was adopted, there would be a lot of lawsuits filed, because no jurisdiction that adopted a tax and they were trying to do a clawback or make, make it go away, nobody's just going to say, okay, yeah, you're right. People are going to sue. And the definitions, the way it's written, it's, I could see why everybody's opposing it, and I could, I could tell you that all jurisdictions, nobody's in favor of it, so we will see. It'll be interesting. I'll keep you updated on the legislation that's coming down.
Thank you very much, Jose. Current impacts of water supply? Anything new?
Well, Mayor and Councilmember, I'm really delighted to report that both Lake Mendocino and Lake Sonoma are literally 100% full. Obviously, we're in really good shape with our local reservoirs. This year, I think there's a lot of effort to try to keep as much of that water contained within the reservoir through the use of forecast informed reservoir operations. According to Sonoma Water, they're trying to hold back about an additional 11,650 acre feet between the two of them to try to, you know, keep that water and not release it. Obviously, it's a balancing act with these big storms we're going to get. Hopefully, they don't have to release more during the, during the storm event, but it's really positive news for our local water situation. So since 2019, we haven't been quite at this level in nearly, nearly four years, so good shape, good shape.
Thank you, David. Council Direction on Future Agenda Items. Anyone have anything? No? That was great. Look at that. All right, meeting adjourned at 6:43. Our next meeting is scheduled for March 22nd. Thank you, everyone, for being here.
Wow. Get ready for it.